Like to call to order the regular meeting scheduled, uh, noticed for today. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance. We have the roll call, please.
Alternate wall. Alternate Wu.
Do you zoom?
You can unmute yourself now, sorry.
Present.
Trustee Chen is not here. Trustee Dairy.
Present.
Trustee Osagüela. Vice Chairperson Sedun is not here yet, and Chairperson Delmar.
Here. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations, at City Hall, the Crow Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the Library Board of Trustees on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the Library Board of Trustees may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into a microphone. I would now like to ask Management Analyst Shigenaga to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak. Second, we will ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raise hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on participants, and then clicking on raise hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for a public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a seven AM cutoff the day of a library board of trustees meeting for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there is sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the meeting. Any comments received after seven AM the day of a meeting will be included in the public comment record, but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one here, do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
We do not.
All right. Uh, before we begin, is it possible for us to make Sandy bigger on the Zoom? So, because she's a postage stamp right now. I don't want to miss, I don't need to see me that big at all. That's much better. Okay, good morning. All right, let's start with the chairperson's report. Uh, the year is winding down rapidly already. I can't believe it. We have no meeting in December. And since last week was Thanksgiving, I was sort of reflecting on, on the gratitude I was feeling in general, but especially for this group, it's been a really good year of accomplishment. And I am very pleased and honored to be working with all of you and look forward to continuing the good work, uh, next year and have an equally productive twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're going to hear later in the meeting all, some of the things that we've gotten done throughout the year, and I'm not going to list them now, but you just know how productive you've been. And that's all I've got for my report, short and sweet. Um, the second item on the agenda are trustee reports. Do any trustees or alternates have anything to report? We'll, we'll start with, uh, Sandy, since she's via Zoom. Anything to report, Sandy?
Uh, not this time.
Great. Vivy, how about you? Anything to report? All right, Lois?
Not really, no.
All right. Kathy, how about you? Anything?
Nothing.
All right, terrific. The third item on the agenda is the Crane Art Gallery liaison report. Vice Chairperson Sedun is not here, so we'll just skip over that and move on to the fourth item, which is the San Marino Center renovation update report, which is me. Looking out the window, I can see them hard at work. Um, apparently there was a tour given to a couple of the city council members last week as demolition is nearing completion on, uh, on the San Marino Center, and it's kind of exciting to see all the work that's going on. There's going to be a scheduled tour for the task force members, of which I was a member, um, soon. I don't know when, just to sort of see when, when progress is, is going on. So I'll have more to report, uh, come January. Is Julie, you want to add, Kathy, did, did you know of additionally?
But just that, um, I am working to, uh, uh, ask internally, uh, the project managers to, uh, um, provide monthly updates on significant highlights and milestones on the project as it kind of enters into its, you know, mid-phase and then towards, uh, final completion, which could be mid, mid-year to early fall of next year. So I'm working on trying to get that internal communication pushed to Steve, so he can share that with the group.
Was there any response to the email you sent? You copied me on?
Yeah, they're working on it.
Okay.
But they're working on, on kind of coordinating with the, um, the general contractor and the foreman to be able to kind of get that. And then we're also, um, I made a suggestion that we, um, also create a construction update page on the city's website. So I know that that is in process as well. So, um, on a real-time basis, anybody can go to the city's website and check the status of the process, the project.
I will tell you, it's funny because just as a, a citizen driving by, you see the fence up and you don't really know what's going on. Seeing the photos that were taken from the inside of it, you're like, wow, they're really getting a lot of stuff done. And so it's kind of nice having those visuals. So I, I encourage the city to publish photos as much as possible because
Yeah.
Kind of like newsletter that the city manager sends is helpful. This is the same way to kind of spread that message. When I see those photos of city workers clearing tree limbs and after snow, after storms and stuff, you're like, oh yeah, I mean, I'd have been there to see him do it, but now I know what's, what's going on.
Yeah, the repository of photos on the webpage itself is also going to be, it tells a picture tells a thousand words, right?
Yes.
So there'll be narrative as well as photos is my hope.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the fifth item on the agenda is the Friends of the Crow Public Library Liaison Report. Can we have the report from Lois?
Well, I attended the Friends meeting and, um, they, with their new president and a new treasurer, they seem to be very active. Their big discussion was buying new book bags. If someone buys ten dollars worth of books, they get a blue book bag. And so they're out looking for places so they can get the, they're out of bags, they get more bags. And they're now open seven days a week. On Sunday, they're open, uh, let's see. They're open three hours on Sundays and four hours on Saturdays plus the rest of the week. And I think they're doing very well. I'm working on Saturdays twice a month and it's, they're doing very well.
That's great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The sixth item on the agenda is the San Marino Public Library Foundation Liaison Report. Uh, trustee Chen is not here, so we'll skip over that. The seventh item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Are there any questions from the board? No? All right. Um, I'd like to open up the item for public comments. Does anyone want to speak at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. There's no one here, so, uh, do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
We do not.
All right. At this time, I'll bring the item back to the board for discussion. Any comments or questions from the board upon the minutes? No? Okay. Do I have a, a motion?
I, I move to approve the minutes of the October meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Great. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dairy.
Yeah.
Trustee Osagüela.
Yes.
And Chairperson Delmar.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you. Um, the eighth item on the agenda is the Director and Library Manager Report. Can we please have a presentation from Community Services Director Johnson and Library Manager Vera?
Steve, uh, good morning, everybody. On page nine of your packet is where our report begins. And, um, I hope that everyone has had an opportunity to take a look at it. We will not review it necessarily in detail as usual, but we are excited to share some personnel updates. Linda and her, uh, um, full-time librarian supervisors have been hard at work to, um, uh, interview and, uh, welcome to new library assistants. Uh, a gentleman by the name of Jack Demeo and Mario Lopez. Um, I don't know, Linda, if you'd like to say a little bit about how excited you are to have them on the team?
They're, um, they're absolutely lovely people. They come with a lot of energy, a lot of customer service experience, um, and a lot of instructional experience. So, um, Jack comes to us from the music world. He has, uh, taught guitar classes, so that's great. Um, I believe it is also Jack who, uh, speaks some Mandarin. So we're really, really happy to have someone on the team who can speak to patrons in the language that they're most comfortable in. Uh, that, that's wonderful. And, uh, Mario participated in a mentorship program for youth in the LA County Library System, and he currently works for LAUSD, which is wonderful. That means we'll have him on Saturday, and we're hoping that that will open up opportunities to have youth programs on the weekends, which right now we've been, you know, a little strained, but, uh, we're really, really excited to have people that bring these skill sets to the library.
Great.
Okay, great. And then, uh, turning the page, uh, onto page ten at the very top. Uh, this is where we have, um, made it, made note of our, uh, Q1, quarter one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, which is the operating budget that we're working within right now. And, uh, as part of your packet, you had an attachment one, which is our budget monitor, as well as attachment two, which is the donations monitor. Is this oversized? Paper? So the, um, it is early in the operating year, but the story that these, uh, reports tell today uh, on, um, the attachment one, the budget monitor report, um, you know, really, uh, as far as the revenue goes for, um, at the very top of the page, you'll see that, um, we're tracking at about twenty percent. It, since it is quarter one, we should be hoping if we, you know, around twenty-five percent, but we're tracking for revenues around twenty. And that's because on line two, it appears that our passport revenue, which is the bulk of our revenue, is lagging a little bit, but, uh, we're not really worried about it. Um, that could be a posting issue, you know, just based on when the reports were run, things like that. So, uh, then down on the middle of the page in the blue box, the blue table, um, we are tracking pretty much on point, uh, with where we should be for, uh, being twenty-five percent into the operating year. Uh, one, um, note that I would like to, uh, you know, kind of bring forward is the fact that we've been expressing that our, our personnel staffing, um, levels have been, um, you know, where we've been understaffed. So you would then think that our personnel line would not be tracking, uh, the where it's tracking. So, uh, on line item ten, we are at thirteen percent for part-time, but then you look at item, our line item eleven, and you'll see that benefits number is at fifty-two percent. So to the right i- in the comments section is the reason for that. The benefits were sort of front-end loaded, uh, for the annual budget. So it states the annual, uh, cow purse payment that's charged to our operating budget plus monthly contributions in quarter one is, is where that big, sort of that, that big expense is coming from. It's just, uh, the way the finance department is posting those cow per, uh, benefit expenses to the, uh, library's budget. And then moving forward, forward, it will only include monthly contributions. So we got a big, big hit in the, at the beginning, which then is kind of making it look like our expenses are tracking, but really it's that one time, uh, cow purse expense. So we're still lagging on, um, our, our personnel, our part-time personnel line item. Uh, and then other than that, expenses are tracking just fine and no, no other big story here or concerns. Unless you, anybody has any questions, we'll move on to, uh, flipping, flipping over the report.
I do have one dumb question.
Yeah.
I remember one scenic rebates. What, what, I'm sure I've seen that a million times. What is that?
Yeah. Um, Kristen, you want to answer that? She explains it much better than I do. Or Linda?
Okay, go ahead. Um, scenic is, uh, the name of the, uh, it's like the little, the, it's the program that we are tapping into to get high-speed internet.
Gotcha.
Um, we are getting this at a reduced rate, and, uh, we're getting this through a contract with the California State Library, who provides this service to all California public libraries. As part of this reduced rate, uh, all libraries have the option of either getting discounts throughout the year or, uh, taking the lump sum and running, which is what we chose to do. It's what we do every year. Uh, so we're just, uh, keeping on.
Yeah, it's an annual line item of revenue that we've been getting for, it's nothing new, and it's
Excuse me, wasn't I just saw it and didn't remember it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are many acronyms involved with that, with that internet project, so.
Okay, thank you.
So any other questions before we move on? About the budget monitor report?
Questions from the board?
Okay, so turning over the report to the donations monitor. Um, uh, first off, I would like to, um, highlight again the way the report is laid out, just to refresh everybody, you know, we don't look at this. We are looking at this on a quarterly basis. Um, anyway, uh, some feedback. Um, and so the top line items one through eight in the green table represent the, um, revenue that, that we bring in for donations. And we are, um, tracking well ahead of schedule, or, you know, we're at seventy-seven percent for the year, and that is because we did receive, uh, uh, the donations, the donation check in a lump sum from the Friends group. So we are at, uh, thirty-one thousand, one oh one total revenue for the year for donations that we anticipate around forty. So that brings us to about a seventy-seven percent. Um, you know, we've reached that revenue point already. Um, then you move to the blue section, which is our expenses, and, um, the reason why, if you compare the line, uh, below line item twenty, you'll see those two lines and there's a total for, um, expenses. The budget was at sixty-two, which then puts us at a deficit of twenty-one, five hundred. I don't know if anybody would like that explained. The reason for that deficit or that differential and why we don't show a balanced budget here is because of line item ten. Uh, the computer room renovation, which, um, is a, uh, twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollar expense that will hit the donation, um, account. And so that, to cover that balance, though, will, we will get a transfer in from, if you look to the very far right, there is a donation reserve fund, small summary table to the far right. And if everybody can see that upper right of this report. And we are basically sitting on approximately seventy thousand dollars in that donation account. So we will do a transfer out from here and a transfer in to the donation monitor account to cover that, to balance the, the donation monitor account. So any other questions for this? And then the, the bottom half of this report represents detailed line items that we were asked to, um, to, to display in a report that shows the spending out of each of these particular line items. And we are not, we haven't done a lot of spending, basically.
And when do we expect it to receive the donation from the foundation, from literary libations? I don't see that.
Um, I don't know the answer to that exactly when we will be receiving that.
Will it be the, this?
Yes, this fiscal year. Yes. Yes. I don't know exactly when. I know they're still truing up that, um, you know, the, the bottom line on that account with final receipts coming in.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I, the computer room renovation, is it going to happen this fiscal year too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to open this up for public comment. There's nobody here. Okay? And no one wants to speak. No one's here.
Yeah. Did we? It's early in the year. We didn't really expect a lot of questions about this particular report.
All right. Should we move on to our ninth item then?
Uh, yes. Oh, well, let's
You have more on you.
Yeah, we're still going to keep going here. No, that's okay. So still on page ten. So the Meet the Librarian event was very successful. I don't know if we have any questions about that. Linda is here to, um, I know Deborah Sedun was, um, trustee Sedun was present, and so that was a huge success. Uh, we are working on the, um, this is just, uh, for everyone's book of knowledge. Uh, we have budgeted, um, that we, um, or I should say it is part of our work plan to do the research for a new ILS system and be able to budget for it for next year. So the research has begun. We've met with, um, to, to, uh, sort out kind of the project itself, how we're going to manage the project, and then, and, and working internally with the finance department, our internal, uh, network support vendor, who happens to be called Intellisys. Uh, and then what our role as staff is going to be as we then present a recommendation for a new ILS vendor for the next fiscal year. So that is a, a work plan item and, um, just happy to report that it's, it's underway, uh, as we move through this process and we identify the vendors that we're going to be, um, uh, interviewing, uh, and then, and then putting forward, forward a recommendation. We will put that forth to you first before we put it forward to council. So that's, that's really an exciting technology upgrade that, um, we're excited to be taking the, the library to the next level with a lot of good progress, and that'll be a, a huge step forward. Any comments, Linda, on this? She's also agreed to spearhead the, the, with staff, the, um, internal feedback on the, um, types of functionality that we're really looking for. Uh, and then working with the, the team to get their feedback, identifying who those vendors are, and then I'll be working with her on how, how that interview process will go. So any other comments? Did I pair, did I summarize that?
Okay, excellent summary. Yeah, no, we're, we're really excited to do this, and really the primary push is because the ILS system that we're currently running on is an open source platform, and since we don't have the capacity to hire a programmer, uh, and have them onsite full-time, we're really not able to utilize the ILS to the best of our ability to serve the community. So, uh, we're looking for something that will allow us to serve with the skill set that a librarian is expected to have, uh, instead of adding that and computer programmer on top.
Yeah, any questions about that? No? Okay, as we move on, I'm really excited to share that the new teen advisory group, uh, is, um, getting resurrected. Linda and Janelle? I believe, or all, or everyone?
Uh, it, it is kind of a group effort because teens fall into a, a, not children, but not exactly grown-ups either category. So, um, it really is spearheaded by our, um, teen librarian. So she's taking the lead on that. Um, but we're all sort of supporting and researching with her and
And it essentially gives teens in the community an opportunity to volunteer here as well as help drive programming.
Nice.
And how they're, have their voice heard as we develop some new programs to meet that, to meet the, the, that age demographic. So we're super, I'm really, really excited about that, and I know staff is. Um, we, uh, Linda and, uh, participated in a trunk or treat. Then on page eleven and going forward, we have the calendar, please. Um, you know, uh, take a look. Mark your personal calendars to join, uh, join us for some of the special events that we have upcoming. Um, I think as, um, if, if I could kind of highlight a few on page eleven, listed under December, December ninth, uh, it's Home for the Holidays. That is, uh, an event that, um, the recreation side is spearheading, and it will be, uh, showcasing the bus stop, the historic bus stop shelter. And there will be a mayor's reception as well as kid activities. Santa will be showing up by fire truck. There'll be, um, photos with Santa. Um, the outgoing mayor will be, um, speaking, will be, um, allowing the mayor-elect to speak. We will be, um, you know, having a tree lighting ceremony, uh, and then a lot of fun, uh, um, family activities. There's free refreshments. Please plan to join us. It should be
Will that be here or I said?
No, I'm sorry. The location is the, um, the bus shelter, so it's across City Hall, across adjacent. The little house, the little holiday house. Yep. And, um, so it's the city, the city, the, the history on this is the civic groups, Rotary, as well as the former Chamber of Commerce used to spearhead this for many, many, many years. Well, it was decided last, um, uh, last fiscal year that city staff and the city will take the lead going forward on ensuring that this San Marino tradition continues. So, and, uh, the two internal departments that are leading that are Community Services as well as Public Works. So the Community Services side is, uh, the Recreation Team, because we're in charge of events. Uh, we have, um, designed a, a new event called Home for the Holidays, along with some other kind of festivities throughout the month of December, but we have this mayor's reception. So this will always be a time that we can honor the tradition. We can put the house up. We'll light the trees. We'll have a, a, some, some, a, a quick program, and it kind of kicks off the holiday season as well as continuing this, this longstanding tradition of that corner of San Marino being, you know, if you could think back seventy years, that was the welcome center for, you know, the trolley. That was the trolley stop. That was the bus stop when people would come visit. So, um, on the night, there will be this tree lighting and kind of a ceremonial kind of kickoff to the holidays. So please mark your calendar and join us, and there's free refreshments. And we also have two sponsors, Jones Coffee Roasters. Uh, Chuck Jones is a resident, and obviously they're a coffee establishment in Pasadena. They will be a sponsor of the event, serving hot cocoa and cider, and excited about that. And then Julian down, uh, from, um, downtown is also a sponsor, and they're providing some nice fancy cookies and things like that. So please plan on that. Um, and then if you, uh, moving on to January, please mark your calendar for the open house, which you'll hear a little bit more about from Linda. And let's see, February is our anything? February, we want to highlight. No, not, not in February. I mean, there's lots of great stuff happening, but the two big events, we would love to have all of our trustees there, really. Please wear your badge. Come to the, let, let your, your, your beautiful faces be known that you're serving the library as a trustee. And, uh, and that it's a great opportunity on the ninth as well as on the twenty-first. Uh, but more to come on that. And then, uh, but before we, um, talk about the, uh, open house, I would like to find out if anybody has any questions about any of the other operational reports up through page thirteen.
I, I, I don't have a question. I have just one comment. Very impressive. You've given us the history of San Marino. Since you're such a new resident here, it's very impressive. Any other questions or?
Okay, so I'm going to let Linda just talk a little bit, give a little sales pitch or a, or a commercial pitch on the, uh, open house event that, um, and I, I would like to give a huge shout out to, um, the Foundation Board for many, many years. They spearheaded this event because, um, operationally, um, the city staff were, were maybe not in the best position, is what I understand through, through my research and in talking with Cindy. But now that we are fully staffed and there's new kind of, kind of new bandwidth, if you will, here at the library, we spoke with Cindy.
I'm sorry, are you jumping to item number ten on our agenda?
It's outstanding item.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Forgot about that.
That's right.
I apologize about that. So let's
I'm having
I'm out of order. Thank you. Point of order. Thank you. Ray me in.
The chair. Where's my gavel?
Okay, so that concludes my report.
All right.
Any questions on Director and Manager Report?
Questions? Anyone have it? Okay, the ninth item is the fiscal year, uh, State Library Report. That's the next thing
Got it.
Coming up.
Do we ask for public comment? I know we don't.
Okay, yes, yes. Is there any public comment? I need to ask that. By the way, my, all my sheets say page four of four, every single one of them. So I'm flipping over here and I'm, and I was getting lost, so my apologies for getting out of order as well.
No request for comment.
No request for comment. All right. No request for comment, all right. Uh, let's move on then to the ninth item on the agenda. It's the fiscal year twenty one twenty two California State Library Report. Can we have a presentation from library manager Vera?
All right, well, um, I think you you have some of the highlights uh, in the report. Some of the uh, we're seeing services bounce back, services and programs for sure. Um, I think most striking is um, the change from library visits. So just people walking in the door uh, from the previous reporting period. It was eight thousand one hundred people. Um, and then for this reporting period, we had one hundred eighty three thousand sixty four people. So really a huge, huge bounce up. Um, we're seeing also huge uh, changes in the number of reference questions that we're answering. So uh, for the previous reporting period, it was one thousand two hundred eighteen. And for this period, it was six thousand eight hundred sixty three. Um, I fully expect that number to increase as we continue to staff up and just have more people available to answer those questions. Yes.
What happened to the reference desk? You moved it or you've eliminated it or what?
So reference service is currently uh, taking place at the doors when you walk in. And the reason for that move was because it represents more of a concierge service. You're greeted when you walk in the door. Also, we find that the public uh, tends to not make a distinction between who is a librarian. So who has the capacity to offer and the training to offer reference service and walk with you through the library and assist you versus circulation staff whose job is really bound to that counter. So um, we find that it provides more flexible, more robust um, service by having everything centered at that front desk. A lot of libraries have shifted to this model.
What are you going to do with the reference area then?
Oh, I have so many ideas. It could blow your mind. Um, we we are um, approaching that carefully and thoughtfully. So that way we're doing something that matches the way people are currently using the library. Um, so we, you know, we we wanna observe what the public is doing, what they're asking for and uh, make sure that we're able to be flexible and change that space up as the need arises. Um, but yeah, so uh, programs are um, bouncing back. We had uh, forty eight programs last season, last year versus eighty this year. Um, and our attendance numbers are also bouncing back up. So with adult program um, attendance in for the um, twenty twenty to twenty twenty two, it was eight hundred and eighty one people. And um, this year it was one thousand three hundred seventy six. So, you know, we're we're definitely working to return to those pre pandemic service levels.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Sandy or Vivian, no? Okay, uh, oh, I need to open this up for public comments. Anyone here want to speak on that presentation at the time? No, uh, do we have any public comment requests electronically?
We do not.
We do not. All right, um, let's, I'll bring this item back to the board for discussion. Any comments or questions from the board? So, um, will may I have any motion to receive and file that report?
Yeah, I move to receive and file the fiscal year twenty one twenty two California State Library Report and recommend it for ratification by the city council.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Your second? Okay, great. Thank you. May we have a vote, a roll call, please?
Trustee Derry. Trustee Osagüela.
Approved.
And Chairperson Domi.
Approved.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move on to the tenth item on our agenda. It's the twenty twenty three open house planning. Can we please have a presentation from library manager Vera?
One more. Okay, so um, we're we're terribly excited. Um, we've had lots of um, lots of storytelling and coaching uh, from Cindy, who sort of queued us in. This year is on uh, past practice for the open house. Um, this year is going to be the ninetieth anniversary of the library, as well as the fifteenth anniversary of the building. So um, that's, you know, certainly a a point to highlight. Um, we're planning programs throughout the day, well, from twelve to four um, on that Saturday. So it's um, you know, it's gonna be a little bit of a circus uh, in the best possible ways. We're uh, we're really excited. We're looking at um, crafts and scavenger hunts, um, a video game truck out front. Um, hopefully we'll uh, have some, you know, some pearler bead stuff and just tours. Uh, things for really for everybody. Um, we are so happy to say that uh, we have gotten the San Marino Historical Society to agree to come um, and do a San Marino slash Kroll Library Trivia um, with opportunity drawings. So brush up on your on your San Marino history and and come on down to participate in that. Um, and we're working to see how we can uh, pull in some other community organizations and support and really, you know, make it a large, lovely, fun festive event for everybody.
I have a question. Um, in the past, I was at the foundation members that were giving tours or library trustees? And what do you need from us on that day?
I would love to make use of your tour skills. You're walking backwards right this way. Follow me.
I am a former page. I can't walk backwards at the same time.
Um, yeah, we're, like I said, we're we're still um, getting background and and, you know, support from Cindy, who's sort of queuing us in on on the different functions that um, our partners have fulfilled for us. So I will keep you posted.
Any questions on the open house?
Yeah, I just have one comment, if I could, um, please, uh, because I jumped the gun a little bit earlier. I know that it it, I always really appreciate kind of some backstory or background on certain things. And what I was sort of alluding to was um, that Cindy and the foundation for many years led this event. This is a transitional year that Cindy will be uh, working with us to to um, kind of pass on the all that knowledge through about all the wonderful um, aspects of the event that was held in the past and make sure that we honor, you know, and and utilize all the great, you know, success aspects like the tours, which that's that knowledge transfer getting from Cindy. But uh, but we will be the lead agency this year with the foundation serving in a support role. And then in the future, it will really be a city staff as as a a function with um, obviously the foundation being uh, involved. We would love to get the friends involved as much as possible. It is an open house, not just for us, but for this wonderful bookshop service that way, book, you know, the bookstore, that is a hidden gem as well. So um, but it is a transitional year and we are so appreciative of Cindy and her working with staff and and Linda and her team are ready to go and they're ready to take it to the next level. So that was the only comment I had about open house. And please, uh, it more, more, more to come as the the program gets finalized.
Great, and I'm I'm hoping everyone attends because it's it's always a lot of fun. It's a, it's a fun, fun day. Um, any, let's see, anything, I don't, we don't need to approve that. Uh, can I just go back one second here? We kind of skipped over since uh, we didn't have our trustee here to talk about the uh, Crane Art Gallery. I just wanted to mention that next month, a former library trustee Linda Molno, she is going to be displaying in the the Crane Art Gallery.
It's up. Now, yeah, it's. Wow, when did that happen? Like she had.
Last week.
Yeah.
I haven't been here in a week, so so it's up and and it's.
It's up already.
Yeah, it's up already. So I'm gonna after this meeting go take a look at everything in there. Uh, but she's, it's, uh, she's a renowned artist and it's fun to support that as well. I just wanted to make mention of that. Yes.
Um, just before we move to the final, the final um, item on the agenda, I was remiss in, um, I had one other update from the director's report that I would like to share. And I had a note here and of course I missed it. So I apologize for that. But um, I wanted to provide the trustees with an update on the code of conduct ordinance for the library. So um, the the uh, process is that there's a first reading and uh, the council and and the public is is gives, was, is given the opportunity to comment on it. Uh, and that at uh, passed, the the first reading passed uh, at last month's uh, council meeting, the second reading, there's always two readings to updating of an ordinance or introducing a new, a new ordinance um, policy, if you will. So the second reading will happen on December fourteenth meeting, okay? And then that also gives um, you know, people an opportunity to understand it in uh, but at a, at a, at a greater, greater level. They can appeal anything, they can ask questions, whatever. So that's part of the process. Then after the fourteenth, there's a thirty day waiting period before it can actually be implemented. That thirty day, the clerk publishes the the new ordinance. Um, and then it gives the public an opportunity again to understand it, read it. Um, it gives staff an opportunity to prepare for implementation, which then will happen at some time in uh, mid-January. So just kind of getting through that process. So you'll see that code of conduct being activated, new signage and um, uh, you know, kind of activation of that new ordinance at the beginning of the year.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else? Do we have any written communication or public writings for distribution? Probably not. Um, we will adjourn, uh, the meeting is adjourned at uh, wow, eight forty four, geez, until the next meeting on January twenty third at eight AM here in the bathroom. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You don't have a December meeting.
No December meeting.